Okay, welcome everyone. Work session of the Pecosin City Council. Tonight's subject's going to be on Chesapeake Bay TMDL and the ongoing action plans as the Engineering Department continues to try and put something together that does two things. One, it matches the program requirements of what we've been given and tries to, while at the same time minimize the cost impacts to the citizens. So Alan, we look forward to this briefing and also as we get to the end, we can just briefly talk about, okay, what's next steps and all that, okay?
Okay. What this briefing is about is about our first five-year Chesapeake Bay TMDL action plan. We're required to meet the Chesapeake Bay TMDL requirements in three five-year periods. This is the end of the second year for the first five-year period. At this point, we were required to have an action plan done and have a basic idea of what we're going to do to meet the first requirement, which is 5% of the total goal. The report, this is the front cover of the report that will be available for public comment beginning this week, possibly as early, hopefully as early as tomorrow, definitely by the next day or toward the end of the week. We will have this comment period running for 30 days. So the public is invited to comment. You can find, they can find a copy of the document online or at the library, or they can stop by the engineering office and view it there as well. And written comments can be submitted to the engineering office and that information will be available on the city website. This document, we provided a, provided a copy to council tonight, was literally finalized at 4:30 this afternoon, so you have the latest document. The first step in determining what are, what we're going to do over the next few years is to figure out what we have to do. And the first step in doing that was to define our service area. If you look at the earlier Chesapeake Bay program requirement or information for Pecosin, you'll see they talk about 15.3 square miles and they characterize the entire city as pretty much urbanized or developed. And as we know, part of this, part of the city is federally owned, part of it is tidal wetlands, part of it is unregulated land that doesn't drain to our storm sewer system. And what we are required to treat is the area that drains to our storm sewer system. So our consultant, AECOM, using topography and also making a lot of use out of the NASA GIS surge prediction tool, has defined what areas actually drain into the ditches and the pipes that are, that we maintain that is above the jurisdictional water line. And it's kind of hard to see here, but it's clear in the report. The dark green area is our service area and the other areas are clearly defined as plum tree island, those wetlands. So what we did is we reduced the service area to what it actually is instead of what the federal government and the state government assumed for us. And once that was done, we looked at, or we looked at the service area and looked at the types of land use. We don't have to treat forested land because it's already considered to be in a pristine or baseline condition, nor do we have to treat inland water. So they, four categories were defined, forest, water, regulated pervious, which is lawns, smaller patches of trees, and also landscaped areas, and regulated and pervious, rooftops, pavement, that sort of thing. And looking at, taking that information and figuring out exactly what we had to do, you can see that our service area, which was originally assumed by the Bay Program to be 15.3 square miles, is actually 3.1 square miles, or 20% of the original assumed area. Now, most of the area we have to treat pollutions, our pollution for, most of those land uses that really create a lot of pollutants are found inside the service area. So instead of a 20%, or hitting 20% of the total pollutant requirements that were in the early report, we're probably down to about 50 or 60% of the original pollution number. But that's still a substantial savings to citizens and clearly defines what we're actually required to do through our permit. Now, as I said, most of the developed areas are in that service area and we have to treat the pollution from that service area. Another thing to keep in mind, by defining the service area, we have to locate our retrofits inside the area that drains into our drainage system. So even though there might be a good piece of land that's outside the area that drains into our storm drainage system, we can't really cite a pond there and take credit for it immediately. So it does limit our sites a little bit, but it's still a huge benefit to go ahead and define that area. Okay, the first five-year period ends July 1st, 2018. Everything has to be in the ground and it has to be functional. So the goals are to have it in the ground a year early so we can make sure it's working the way it's supposed to work. We're looking for cost-effective measures and we're looking for secondary, and hopefully we're going to find a secondary use. And the example of that are the city hall retrofits we talked about earlier. We're actually going to get some flood storage out of those retrofits. Now, the challenges we've been running into as we go through this is that the state and federal governments are still developing this program. Literally, we were waiting until last week to find out if we could take credit for septic tanks that were taken offline and how much credit we could take for them. So there are more questions than answers a lot of times with the Bay TMDL program. And a lot of the treatment options that you really want to use in a coastal environment because they're more cost-effective and work well with our high groundwater and soils are still being evaluated by the program. So we really have very few treatment options at this point that are cost-effective. And that kind of led to an interim goal. While we're waiting for more cost-effective measures to come about, we want to be very careful not to use up a piece of land that might be available for economic development or might be better used for a future treatment practice that we're not allowed to use yet. And we don't want to spend a lot of money on a treatment measure when we might have a less expensive option in the future. So we wanted to find the, basically, the least expensive treatment measures that we could, using up the least amount of land until we have more options. So this is what we came up with. We're going to take credit for a land use change and the septic tanks coming offline. And those are septic tanks, in the report it says 2009, but we can actually go back and take credit for any septic tank that was taken offline in the household converted or connected to sewer from 2006 onward. We're going to take credit for a land use change where, under FEMA program, the house was removed and now we've got trees and grass planted on the lot. So if the structure goes away, we're going to take credit for it. We talked before about the city hall retrofits at an earlier city council work session. Those were included in the program and they're contributing a major portion of the pollution removal that we need. In addition, we're doing grass filter strips and we're upgrading swale at the Public Works Yard. Both of these types of practices are taking advantage of land uses that are occurring now. They're not, they're being placed in areas where you would keep it grassed or keep the swale in the future anyway. So we're not really changing land for treatment practices in the future and we're basically just upgrading existing conditions to get water quality treatment credit where we're not getting it now. The other thing about the action plan is we have added some language about how we need more options and we also reserve the right to change the location of the treatment measures and change the type of treatment measures as we get into the site analysis and as more treatment options become available. This is the location of the treatment measures. And basically, we're hitting both the Back River and the Pecosin watershed, or river watersheds, so we're kind of spreading and providing treatment or water quality improvement to both river sheds. Okay, city hall BMPs. The design is just about finished. We're getting the bid constructions done. The next step is that goes to DEQ for review. If you will recall, we have a SLAF grant or a State Local Assistance Fund grant for about half the construction cost of this. The costs have risen for two reasons. As the design has progressed, one is just getting a little bit more into the site conditions. The other reason is we're finding that stormwater treatment facilities are getting more and more expensive to construct statewide because there are a lot of people who are having to put them in the ground in a short amount of time. So it's a supply-demand type thing. We will have updated cost estimates following the DEQ review. And the SLAF grant program is structured so there may be a way to get additional funding to help offset the increase in cost. But that's the status of those. We'll hopefully have the DEQ review done by the next council meeting. Okay. The costs for the other treatment measures add up to about $240,000. And that is a lot of money, but that is not as much as it would cost to put in ponds or other type treatment because once again, we're taking advantage of owning the land, we're taking advantage of basically upgrading an existing land use or instead of building a whole new facility. These costs were done by the engineering consultant and they have a large contingency factor in there also. There may be possibilities to do some work in-house or cut these costs down further, but for this initial, initial stage, this is where we are and we will also be applying for more grant funding for these projects. Okay, the Public Works Yard swale is located on the south side of the property and is an existing swale. Basically, it'll be widened, the soil in it will be amended, and we'll have some wetland grasses planted in it. And also some rock check dams will be installed. And that's what the practice looks like. Once again, it looks like something that's very typical in coastal communities. We'll see this in the city. But you don't get credit unless you go through the practice or the steps of augmenting the soil and doing the ditch widening and putting in the check dams. You don't necessarily have to keep the grass that tall either. So we're paying for the rock check dams, we're paying to widen and regrade the ditch, we're paying for soil amendments, and we're talking, paying for wetlands grasses, or wetlands plantings. The advantages is since the Public Works Yard is considered a hotspot by the regulators, a place where you could have something blow out, there's a higher likelihood of trash or something, the rock check dams will collect the debris. It's a relatively low cost per pound removed and we're modifying an existing facility. The disadvantage is you're going to increase the amount of standing water in what is now, for the most part, a dry ditch and therefore there's a mosquito control issue. Unfortunately, almost every TMDL practice involves slowing the water down, having it stand more. So that's a common concern with any water quality feature. Grass filter strips, I'm going to show you the locations and then we'll talk a bit more about these. This is around the edges of the parking lot of the property at Mesic Point where it's grass now. You can see around the area that might make a possible good beach location in the future. We pulled them back. This is at the elementary school. I've had some discussions with Steve Pappas on that, but we need to continue that. And also with that, he actually suggested some other locations where we might be able to put grass filter strips. If we amend the soil, grass will grow better and we may be able to do more filtering. Victory Boulevard grass filter strip. This is shown from the city property line to the Oxford Run ditch. The concern with this is we're talking about, and it's shown on the north side of the road, we're talking about widening Victory Boulevard. So why would you put a treatment practice in an area where it might go away someday? First of all, by the time the road gets through the VDOT design process, we have a few years where we can make use of existing property without taking away developable land. As part of the VDOT process, they treat existing paved area, so they would be providing this, this additional treatment anyway, so that they would basically just be replacing it as they do the project. And the nice thing, understanding that this might impact development, this can actually move a little bit. These grass filters can be put in other places in the city. And what, basically, what are you doing? You're modifying the soils. We have type, we have what's considered a hydroxic soil, very clay, very silty in the city. It basically does not allow water to infiltrate. So you're at, you're basically disking up the soil, you're adding soil amendments to it, sand, compost, that sort of thing. So it actually will infiltrate some water and provides a little bit more air in the soil for roots to grow. You're regrading a 35-foot wide strip to allow water to sit there a little bit. It sheet flows onto the strip and then eventually it's filtered and goes overboard into the ditch, basically. So it's a very simple process. It came from the agricultural community and it's got some potential here until we have more options. So we're paying for the soil amendments, the regrading and basically replanting grass. If we want to go to a different type of ground cover, that is acceptable too. Advantages, you're locating it in buffer green space areas so you're not taking out another land use. It's a very low cost per pound of pollutant removed and it provides program credit for existing green space where we're not getting credit now. They're not really, they're telling you to treat the grass now. After this goes in place, the grass is considered a treatment measure. So you're converting the land use, which actually helps a bit. The disadvantages, you're replacing grass with grass. It doesn't look like you've done anything terribly amazing there, but it actually is getting you credit where you weren't getting credit before. So what would we like to see happening? Deceptive tanks. That took a couple conference calls and having to convince DEQ that we actually needed credit for it and this is how much credit we could get. And we finally, they verified last week that we could get credit for septic tanks. There are a lot of coastal community treatment practices that have been proposed. Fragmites harvesting involves cutting the fragmites before they go into the part of their cycle where the nitrogen goes back in the soil. And there is a market for fragmites pellets in Europe for refuse derived fuel, basically incinerating it to produce electricity. Oyster aquaculture is still hanging out there. They're still evaluating whether Sanctuary Reef gets credit and it's winding its way through the program, but at this point, they're not sure if they want to give local governments practice or credit for offshore practices. So we're still waiting to hear for that. If that ever came to pass, we might act, the city might actually find itself in a place where you're actually selling pollution removal credit to other localities because we have so many, so much potential for oyster harvesting off the shores, or shores. Proprietary BMPs, the Filtris, actually, these are basically pre-manufactured treatment devices that you can, that you can stick in the ground inside a drain inlet. Urban tree planting, they've just formed an advisory committee and they're evaluating that. And living shorelines are still, is still winding its way through the process. Redevelopment is a major help for both the developer because they have lower stormwater treatment costs and for the city because you're changing the type of land use that was considered the baseline condition. So everybody gets credit for that. Street sweeping requires the right type of equipment. You have to weigh it before disposal. You have to commit to sweep every two weeks, I think. That may be something in the next five-year cycle, but right now, we're, they're still considering the options there too. And that is basically the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. And that's, you've come a long ways, especially on the decision to get sewers, sewer conversion applied. So that's, that's a great thing. Of the 5% that you said that we're, we're due, how much, what percentage of, this barely meets 5%? What is this?
A little bit over, the, the action plan explains this. We're a little bit over in a couple of the pollutants. I can get you that exact amount. It's listed in the report, but literally, we just got it this afternoon. I can get you that.
While you're looking at that, freshen my memory if it's not precise, but in the second five-year period, we got to pick up 55% more, isn't it? Don't we have to be at 60 at the end of the second?
No, we have to be at 40% at the end of the second. However, remember that the EPA is using adaptive management, so they're basically going to do another computer model run in 2017. And by the time we get our new permit requirements in 2018, they could be based on a totally different set of basic requirements. So they could, they could change the, you know, what 100% is for everybody in the entire bay watershed. Now, we're doing, we're trying to get some common sense into the program. We've been talking about the watersheds quite a bit. Some of the large localities like Norfolk and Portsmouth have realized that being classified in Virginia Beach have realized that being classified in the James River watershed, even though Virginia Beach may not, doesn't drain to the James River watershed, means that they'll have additional pollutant removal requirements because of the chlorophyll, a problem in the James River. So there's starting to be a little talk about that and some other changes to the model, but we're looking at a black box. We don't know what the final pollution removal requirements are going to be. The best strategy for the staffs of all the local governments is just basically to push for more realistic options for treatment that are more cost-effective. It's also my thinking that at the end of this exercise, people are going to, the regulators are going to sit down and they're going to see how much more this is costing than what they thought it would cost and how few options we have. And hopefully, they're going to change the process to give us more alternatives because right now, we just have very few.
So here's what, here's why I'm asking that question. What does that get you? Because I'm basically doing a cost to benefit analysis, all right? So you say, basically, taking advantage of some things that we've already paid for in the ground. And then adding $250,000 to that.
Right.
Only gets us 5%.
Right.
So the rest of the 95%, if we continue at that rate, is...
Is about $10 million, 10 to 12 million. However, like I said, we're hoping for some more cost-effective measures in the future. But if we don't, yes, it will cost 10 to 12 million.
So how do we, how do we get the attention of, of the political arm, I guess? I mean, this is a good brief, okay? And I think that it tells a pretty good story of what Pecosin is going to go about and the relative costs of what that is. So, you know, I guess what I would like to do is maybe we give this brief to our state and federal political arm and then let them know, okay, well, how do you expect us to do the 10 million? And what are the things that are, what are the things that they can help push the decisions that y'all need to make a decision for the next 10 years? But clearly, $10 million for the reduced land area that you've gotten, you've done some great things. I remember, we were talking about all of Pecosin, you've refined that down, you've gotten it. So you've done some really great work, but it's still what I consider to be unaffordable without some help.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the ones that we're putting in, actually, the state, I guess with the grant that you talked about, the state's throwing in, they're actually spending the money along with us. And I just want to make sure they understand, you know, okay, well, I got you 5%. Because 5% is pretty unflattering, I guess, is what I'm saying. I put 5% down on a house and it's $258,000. I, you know, I'm just trying to bring it to, with something that somebody understands. And the other thing that concerned me, and then I'll open it up to council, you know, one of the things that I, your, the grassy swales, the grassy ditches. I remember that the, we're having just a reverse issue with Oxford Run, right? I mean, we have to keep that clear.
Correct.
Otherwise, the neighborhoods flood.
Mm-hmm. That's why we would widen the public work swale to make, provide the capacity along with it and the, that's why we also looked at filter strips instead of getting into the ditch.
But in those filter strips would come the accumulation of trash, things that would block flow that are not necessarily treating it, so to speak. And I just want to be mindful of that and the, what you brought out, the mosquito control version of it. So I just think that there's a, there's a good story to tell to get people thinking about, what does this look like in a, in a coastal community? I think you've captured it all. I just, I'd like to take advantage of it and get the word out and let them know what, you know, what we're seeing.
I know that Virginia Beach is also pushing, Virginia Beach and the larger communities have another year to finish their action plan because their permits are not finalized yet. But they're, in addition, the state, the EPA is specifying how many treatment measures they have to physically put in the ground and they have a lot of requirements that the smaller communities to date do not have. But they, Virginia Beach has done a good job in pushing alternatives. One thing I hadn't mentioned yet was boat pumpouts. And once again, it's that question by the state, by the federal government, do we give localities credit for work that happens offshore? And logic would dictate, yes, you should. Anything that improves the bay gets us closer to our goal. But this program has turned into a real maze of what gets us credit, how much credit does, do we get? It's amazing. I actually heard a tree planting thing where they were talking about what sort of tree and what type of compost underneath, so...
Well, what, I think the two things that dawned on me was that, one, that they would reset their thinking, which means your 5% could disappear.
Right.
On the backside, they would remodel. But the other thing is that you're basically replacing grass with grass, so how do you, how do you measure? And how do you prove what you've done? Because this could be seen as a nice way to, to basically get big contracts, do major improvements and not really do anything. You're planting, planting grass with grass, right? And you're promising that the soils underneath will be more pervious.
They have a verification process coming too, which is also...
Sure.
We'll, we'll see a lot of new companies doing inspections in future years, probably.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I got. Other council members?
Just a comment, Gene. You do realize changing grass with grass puts it with a different kind of grass that has federally controlled regulations to that grass.
I'm sure.
And possibly the EPA is putting mosquito on the endangered species list. And, and, and for this, not enough malaria or rat.
Are these swales easements or are they private?
Everything is on public property. That's actually a cost, one of the things we did for cost saving. I mean, it may not seem like cost savings, but yes. That, there were a lot of things that narrowed the scope right now, include, not just the treatment measure, of the fact that Pecosin is so built out or has so many, you know, it's built out or there's a reason it's not built out, made it more difficult for Pecosin. Our consultant was really struggling coming up with stuff compared to, say, Suffolk where it's not as built out. There are very few communities this size with this level of urbanization where people actually, in the service area, I should say.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The service area, that interested me. The 3.1 square mile number in the MS4 service area that you mentioned, it's probably the third slide in.
Yes.
Does that mean that virtually all of the people in Pecosin live within a 3.1 square mile area?
No.
What is the service area? What is the service area?
The service area is what physically, if a drop of water falls somewhere, it physically gets into our drainage system.
Okay.
So back, it's the front yards of most houses that are fronting a public street, their front yards are draining, and their backyards are typically going off into a creek. You know, if you think about Pecosin Shake with all those little peninsulas, the backyards of all those houses are draining straight into state waters without hitting our drainage system, and those backyards don't, aren't something we have to treat.
Okay. And secondly, the replacing grass with grass and different soil and all that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm curious about that, but if that were to end up being actually a positive way to make water drain faster.
Right.
I can think of a number of private properties in town who people would be happy to say, well, you know, I'll never develop my front yard, for example, so come in, come have at it. Is that something that...
It might be. You need a 35-foot wide strip minimum width, so that 35-foot wide strip is kind of a limiting factor, too, because in some cases, you're taking up a major chunk of their front yard, but that, that would definitely be a possibility for future.
If they were to do that, would their front yards be declared a wetland?
I haven't, no. Hopefully, the water's draining a bit more.
Hopefully, it's not a wetland.
I'm hoping with...
That's a serious concern.
Yeah. Well, I know that it would require a setback anyway from streets, so, I don't know.
I don't think we would, we would, the soil amendments are intended to make more water absorb into the soil, so it wouldn't be sitting on the surface the way a wetland would. So you're actually changing the soil characteristics. The place where you have to worry about the wetlands would be in the enhanced swale.
What about the kind of grass? Doesn't a certain kind of grass constitute a wetland?
You don't have to do as type of grass on the filter strips that would qualify as a wetland grass, so.
So you can still cut your grass?
Yeah.
Yeah. It just might be...
Can we cut our grass after we do this?
Can you cut your grass?
The city.
The vegetated...
Will we be able to cut the filter strips?
Yes, we will. You might, I mean, in theory, you might want them a little bit taller, but no, the only restriction is you don't want extremely heavy pieces of equipment riding on it, but with the type of equipment we use with the arm, you should be in pretty good shape.
Cut as short as you want, it's fine. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Very interesting. Any comparison where you are compared to the other localities? I don't hear anybody recently talking about TMDL unless they're talking about it at PDC.
Well, the area, the localities with more undeveloped land had a bit easier time doing this. They could put in more ponds. There was one locality that converted agricultural land to forested land, and even though the urban tree planting as a treatment measure isn't in there, they converted a land use, which is another way to get credit. There was one locality that was already street sweeping every two weeks, the entire city. They weigh it, they're going to test it, so they can get credit for that, whereas we don't.
Where do you put it after you...
It has to go in a landfill. And York County is doing a lot of treatment facilities. In recent year, they, they started a little bit early and installed some treatment ponds.
Is that like by York High School, where they're doing that improvement? Is that one of these?
I think it is, yes.
Yeah, it looked like.
That's what it looked like, huh?
And also, Tab Middle did one last year. And there are some localities that have had a lot of redevelopment. And when, with redevelopment, the developers, the redevelopers are doing and paying for the treatment, but the local government gets to take credit for them.
Okay. All right. I'm really done with this, though. Thanks. All right. If nothing else, then we'll move on to the regular session.